Border Protection, Veterans Affairs and Procurement calls this confirmation and public hearing to order. It is now 1:00 PM on Thursday, September 29, 2016. Before we go any further, we had scheduled Bill Number 349-9-33 and Bill Number 368-33 that was scheduled for this public hearing, and the authors of the bills have requested that the bills be removed and possibly rescheduled for a hearing at a later date. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on the executive appointment of Mr. Hardy Tan V. to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission and to receive testimony in the executive appointment of Ms. Maria Jessica De La Peña to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission. We will also be hearing Bill Number 352-33, which was introduced by Senator Tina Munha Barnes. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media to meet the open government law. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM on Thursday, October 6, 2016. Please address testimony to Senator Thomas Ada, Chairperson of the Committee on Lands, Transportation, and All, and can be dropped to the mailboxes here at the legislature or emailed to office@senatorada.org. So we'll go ahead, and thank you, Senator, for joining me today.
Thank you, sir.
And we'll start now then with the executive appointment of the two appointees for the Land Use Commission. Before I call up the nominees, I'm going to go ahead and call up Mr. Mike Borja and Mr. John Arroyo to provide their oral testimony, and then I'll call up the nominees after that. So please.
My name is Mike Borja, the Director of the Department of Land Management and also the Executive Secretary of the Guam Land Use Commission. And I come before you to provide my oral testimony in support of both the nominees to the Guam Land Use Commission, Hardy Tan V. and Dr. Jessica De La Peña. And I'd like to just state that, you know, both individuals have been gracious enough to accept the Governor's nomination to serve on this commission, and both come with a variety of different experiences, but they both come with a heart that wants to make Guam a lot better place. Hardy is, while he may be young, he's got the experience in both the retail wholesale and to some extent connections with the construction industry as far as the supplier may go. He's born and raised on Guam and is also an active community member, he and his family, in different elements here on Guam. Dr. De La Peña comes to this board with a variety of experiences over her years and comes with technical background as an architect and also management experience in a variety of different affairs, both in the public sector and in the federal side of the House and as well as in the private sector. So she comes with a great deal of background in being able to see a lot of and understand a lot of the activities as well that may be brought before the Guam Land Use Commission in a variety of different applications. So I ask that this committee please look favorably upon both of the nominees and to report them out favorably and confirm them in the next legislative session.
Thank you very much. Mr. Arroyo?
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is John Arroyo. I'm here as the Chairman of the Guam Land Use Commission and to provide testimony in support of both the nominees, Dr. De La Peña and Mr. Bai V. With respect to Mr. V., I've only met him a few times, but the opinion that I've come away with regarding him, I'm impressed. I think that he'll be a very positive influence on the commission. As Mr. Borja pointed out, he's young. He still has some learning to do as far as land use is concerned, but he's dedicated, he's willing to learn, and he definitely wants to do what's best for the island. I think that he'll bring a fresh perspective, given his age and his background, something that I think we'll embrace. He's young compared to the rest of us on the commission, and, you know, that provides for us a different point of view, especially when we're looking at issues that are now more current and modern, most especially the ones that we deal with, the sign variances and things like that, the new methods of marketing and promoting and what's being embraced now on island versus what we're allowed to do with respect to the variances. I think will come in greatly appreciated. With respect to Dr. De La Peña, I know her more than I know him. She has the knowledge, the experience, and a technical expertise to assist the Land Use Commission. She holds a Bachelor's of Architecture, a professional Master's of Business Administration, and a PhD. Her work experience covers architectural design, management of projects, process and programs both on and off base, including work related to the Guam buildup, environmental impact statement, and natural resource management. She also will bring a fresh pair of eyes to the table, which will help supplement the technical information that's provided by the A R C. and help those of us who don't have her background better understand the concerns and the recommendations of the A R C. I think both of them will make a, their inputs will complement those of the rest of the members on our board, and I believe that will work cohesively and continue this great working relationship that we currently enjoy, and I wholeheartedly endorse both nominees and ask for you to favorably consider their nominations in your review. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. I might go ahead and call both nominees forward, and you can give your opening remarks, and then if there's any questions, we'll go ahead and pose it at that time. We'll go ahead and go in the order that's listed here. Mr. Hardy V., if you go ahead and provide your remarks, please.
Good afternoon, Senators. My name is Hardy Tan Iglesias V., born in the Hospital of Tumon, product of Guam's school systems and university, now a functioning member of Guam Society. So I am partially of Chamor descent, but my heart wholly identifies as a Pacific Islander. So after having lived in Japan and China for two years each, my soul was unequivocally convinced that this is home. So long as this island can maintain its blessed allure, I will live out the rest of my years and die here, that of which, God willing, will be much later, and also, God willing, will not be before I instill the ideology of respecting our island's natural environment, doing one's part in preserving or enhancing the beauty of our island home, and ensuring that Guam's economy and sustainability is the priority of my children and my children's children after me. So I have decided long ago that I will teach our island's future use to symbiotically live and work with each other. Only then can they move forward. So that is the future intention for me, but before I reach that point, I feel I must do my part in any way possible to see this island develop responsibly and sustainably towards community standards whilst ensuring that this progress does not violate the aforementioned principles I hold dearly. The Pacific spirit within compels me to do so. So thus I am here today. I stand before the committee, or sit, rather, humbly accepting the appointment from our Honorable Governor Calvo to have this opportunity to be part of something I feel will do just that. So this passion is deeply rooted in me after growing up in Guam. As a youngster, until my teenage years, there was not a lot of drastic change that occurred within a 15-year span, I would say. Then somehow between the time I was away in 2008 to 2012, I returned to realize that there were a lot of changes that took place in that four years than there was when I was growing up. So I was fascinated, and the history of Guam is heading for some great changes, heading into a new era of technology and economic diversity, in my opinion, and I would like to help facilitate in some way. I admit that I am stepping out of my comfort zone and diving headfirst into something that I'm not entirely familiar with. However, I am eager to learn and gain firsthand experience of the planning process in regards to how precious land in Guam is used and fulfill the civic duty to contribute to the development of our island home. I am aware that development and progress is not for everyone who are content with the way of life they already have. I'm also aware that there are people whom are slightly daunted when they hear "development and progress," quote unquote, about to materialize in municipalities where they have lived for so long. But I wholeheartedly feel that as long as our collective decisions result in improved quality of life for, if not all, a large part of our citizens that will be directly affected by these changes, there will eventually be faith in our decisions integrity. I will strive to look for solutions that benefit the greater good along with thorough research, civil discussions, and compliance with the laws in place. In closing, I believe that it is important for citizens and government to work together to reach the common goal of improving our quality of life and watch this island prosper for our future generations to come. I am honored, excited, and all kinds of giddy on the inside to be able to work alongside with Gov. Guam. Thank you very much, Senators, for your time.
Thank you. Mr. De La Peña?
Buenas. Buenas en hafa de Chairman Ada and Honorable Barnes. My name is Maria Jessica De La Peña. I am grateful for this opportunity to humbly request for your support and confirmation as your Commissioner in the Guam Land Use Commission. My parents are Eduardo and Benila De La Peña, who are proud citizens of Guam. I first visited Guam when I was three years old in the late 1960s. The A and W Diner located in the east Egania was one establishment I fondly remember frequenting to enjoy my favorite root beer float. In the mid-1970s, my family migrated to Guam from Manila, Philippines. I was excited to come back, only to find the diner was no longer there. I also enjoyed going to a favorite spot in Tumon that needed a four-wheel vehicle and a hike to access the beach where a hotel presently stands. I currently reside in our capital village of Hagotnia. Guam has been my home for more than 40 years, and I take great pleasure in enjoying the wonders of our land, people, culture, and nature. I raise my children, Victoria Vanessa and John Zwilla Clamacho Jr., in our beautiful family-oriented island, and I am very fortunate to have extended my lineage to include my beautiful granddaughter Haley Bro Clamacho Montanotnia. I am a product of our public and private schools on island and universities in Guam in the United States. I hold a Bachelor's of Architecture degree in California State Polytechnic University Pomona, a professional Master of Business Administration degree from University of Guam, and a Doctor of Philosophy degree in Organization and Management specializing in leadership from Capella University in Minnesota. I have gained invaluable work experience while employed in a variety of settings, which include a small local architecture firm and a Fortune 500 company in Guam. I have a variety of skills in programming, master planning, in architecture and environmental design. I have worked closely with our state and local government to ensure our natural resources are protected. I have coordinated Section 7 consultation with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Section 1 of 6 with Guam Historic Preservation Office, and other natural resources with Guam Department of Agriculture and Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources, and the Coastal Zone Management with Bureau of Statistics and Plans. To date, I've seen and experienced Guam's growth in land development and population. I have a deep respect for our people and the protection of our island's resources and environment. I have experience in being a steward of the conservation of our natural resources. I have hunted in our jungles and have spent time in caring for the turtles and preserves. I have participated and listened to citizens in public meetings and hearings held in Guam, Rota, Tinian, and Saipan regarding the environmental impacts in their areas. I would like to offer my diversity of skills, expertise, and experience to assist with the Guam Land Use Commission and its decisions regarding the growing development of our island, to interpret and enforce the spirit of the land use and zoning law, as well as to protect and promote public health, safety, general welfare, and interests of the people. I humbly request for your approval of my confirmation. Sisus Maasi, meramingsalamatva.
Thank you. I think, well, of course, your remarks are recorded into the record and will be part of the committee report. I certainly, I've read through your appointment packets, and I don't have any questions in particular. I did have a chance to meet with you a couple of months ago, and despite your age, I think you bring a lot to the table. And so I'm sure you'll be a contributor to the Land Use Commission. And also, I appreciate the remarks that you have made, and you too, I'm sure, will bring a lot to the table, and so I appreciate the fact that you accepted the appointment from the Governor. So, do you have any questions or comments?
Sisus Maasi, Mr. Chairman Senator Ada, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I want to thank the both of you for stepping up to the plate to volunteer. I had the opportunity to see Dr. De La Peña this morning and talk quite a while with her. I truly appreciate you coming up, especially in a time where, I guess, maybe it could be either true development or contention, and maybe one of the questions I'd like to ask for the both of you is, where do you see us in the next decade as it relates to development and preservation of the land?
Where do I see us for the next 10 years for our preservation of land and the development? Well, we have to take a look at the big picture. Are we going to have the buildup or not? Or are we just going to have our public developments? But what needs to happen is to have a balance between the inhabitants, the development, and also our environment. And with that, I think we can work with as a citizen, as myself, or even as a Commissioner in the GLUC, to take a look at what impacts our infrastructure, what impacts our natural resources, and definitely our environment, and listen to what our people have to say and their comments, because within, for the 10 years that you're thinking of, there will be issues that will come about, and we need to acknowledge what is being said.
So, just to clarify, you were asking where is Guam going to be on like a...
Where do you see, where do you vision us as it relates to both development and preservation?
I guess it kind of touches on what Dr. Peña says. I feel it depends on the geopolitical situation around Asia, and it kind of affects us, especially with certain issues, you know, amongst China, Japan, and things like that. So that kind of affects us where our infrastructure will be, depending on, you know, if the buildup will come with pressures from Asia. So I'm also not really too sure where it's going to be, but I'm going to watch him for this. So my hopes in the future is that infrastructure and agriculture will be developed so that our island can be more sustainable, and hopefully in 10 years that will be the result.
Good. Thank you both for answering the question. When I had the opportunity to speak to Dr. De La Peña this morning, I looked at her resume, and I looked at her expertise on environmental management and quality assurance, and also the leadership roles that you take with continual training and facilities management and integration, and I said, of course, I see that you definitely, as a doctor, meet the qualifications for this. And then as I was looking at yours, Hardy, I looked at the people in the audience, and I see a lot of your family members and friends of the company here, and I also know that you're an F.D. grad, right?
I am, yes.
For a lot of our colleagues in there, that may mean a lot, but no, I'm just kidding. I just wanted to...
You're approved.
I can go now? I'm just kidding.
But really, for me personally, we've got to be able to bring that balance together. We need to be able to talk to our people. We need to be able to make sure that even as Oversight Chair of the Mayors, that they get included, because they're the 24/7 responders to everything that happens in the village, and more importantly, making sure that our infrastructure is there, and you both brought that up today, making sure that when we build, that we have the infrastructure to sustain our island and to sustain so that it's good, not just for the economy, but for our people and for our environment. And I know you touched Dr. De La Peña on a lot this morning. I wish I had the chance to talk to you, Hardy, because I think you bring a very good spirit to the table, especially with your vision and your, you know, your youth. I know you're much older than what you look like, and I just want to say that I think it'd bring a very good plus with both the expertise and the new vision that's there. But important to realize that when we build and when we need to be able to preserve what is truly been, that we've been blessed with, work with the infrastructure, and know that we can probably have both if we make it a win-win for everybody. So I want to say congratulations. I will tell the both of you that if, when it gets on session floor, you will both have my votes, and, you know, usually we wait till in there, but I'd like you guys to know that the votes will be in there, and Senator Ada said you're already approved, which you have to, so I'm kidding. You do, and I want to say thank you for stepping up to the plate, and I understand that John Arroyo took a good time to looking for you, you guys, so I really appreciate, Mr. Arroyo, that you did take the time to vet these guys and ask them for their support. So thank you. Thank you, Senator Ada.
Thank you.
Just so that you know, I noticed you graduated from the academy, and so did my wife.
Yes.
But I do have one question, and that is, you know, most recently, there's been a movement in the community regarding land use and developments in the various municipalities. And there's been two ideas that's been put forth. One is basically the real broad leap to give that control of what development goes on in the municipality to the municipal planning council at the mayor's office, for them to decide whether a development will occur in that village or not, basically doing away with the Land Use Commission. There's been another approach that has been put forward, and that was basically more of an intermediate, a compromise to the one very extreme idea. And the intermediate, the compromise idea is to stand up a hybrid land use commission, which will then have on it four elected mayors to decide on the fate of a project, giving then more input to that municipality. So can you maybe give your thoughts on the two approaches? Which one is more in your comfort zone?
I might have to think about it for a second.
The hybrid that you're talking about, how many GLUC commissioners would you have on there?
You would have five.
You would have five.
Five that's appointed by the Governor, and four elected mayors sitting on it. And that hybrid council will only get stood up if a land use application meets a certain value threshold. Right now, it's being looked at $5 million. Anything below that, it'll be just the Land Use Commission comprised of the Governor's appointees.
Okay. The reason why Mr. V. and I are here right now for the Land Use Commission is because they're lacking commissioners to assist the GLUC. So they have four individuals right now, and you want to have five. And even with the four or five, you will have commissioners that may not be able to be on the board at a certain time, whether they recuse themselves or they have family issues and whatnot. But as far as approving us, I think you should at least still keep it at seven where it is.
So putting aside the viability of your appointment, putting that aside for a minute, just the concept of having standing up a hybrid council versus doing away with the Land Use Commission and putting that power into the municipal planning council?
With the, giving a power to the municipal council is, will, I think you have to strike a balance between the two. Giving control to them is, they would have to provide also expertise, and it's, I like having them on there because of the public hearings. We'll be able to hear what the public would have to say and what their concerns are upfront, but having them to be the control factor, I would have to think about. I can't give you my discernment for that right now, in my opinion, wholeheartedly, but I think there should be a balance between the two.
But it's probably fair to say you're not comfortable with that extreme idea?
You can put it to a test, and why not? I mean, you know, it's maybe a great idea, but I would need to have to ponder and see if that is actually practical.
I think bottom line is we would just comply with whatever the bills are passed, because if I'm not saying this is the one that's in a bill that's being spoken about now, because I'm not fooling you.
There's actually two bills that's been introduced.
Okay.
So one provides a compromise, keeps the gubernatorally-appointed commissioners on the Land Use Commission, albeit at a smaller number, and then at certain times, that commission will get expanded by four elected members for certain land use applications.
I'm actually comfortable with whichever the legislation decides, but if, I mean, at the end of the day, the MPC, if it doesn't get pushed through, they are still citizens with a voice, and it's important, in my opinion, to just consider at least what they have to say, rather than just flat-out block them out, you know? I'm not for that.
Okay.
So I'll still be hearing them out.
No wrong answer, no right answer. So, all right, fine. I don't have any other questions, so certainly appreciate the time that you've taken to prepare. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so we'll consider then the confirmation hearing for Mr. Hardy V. and Ms. Jessica, Maria Jessica De La Peña, to have been completed. We will now hear Bill Number 352-33, and I'll ask the sponsor of the bill to introduce it, please.
Sisus Maasi, Mr. Chair, Senator Ada, thank you again. Bill Number 352-33 LS is an actary zone lot number 2057-R2, municipality of Mongong Tatsumaiti, formerly municipality of Baragata, from agricultural zone A to commercial zone C. Mr. Chair, this bill before us today is... Mr. Chair, this bill before us today is a-
Okay. Can we please take it outside? Thank you.
Thank you. The bill will rezone Lot 2057 on the cliff line, on the MTM area, from agricultural zoning to commercial zoning. And I want to say that this land is fairly close to the airport and is near other commercial businesses. This bill was asked and requested from, from the heirs of the property, so that they could be able to maximize the highest and best use of the property through this rezonement. We were asked to assist them and we obliged. And I do know that we did take the opportunity to get support from the mayor and the municipal planning council. And we do have a letter, Mr. Chair, and I hope that copies were submitted, but if not, a letter from Andrew Vezegomez, working closely with the municipal planning council members and asking them and telling them that the heirs of Mr. Francisco Meno Mesa would like to rezone their property from agricultural to commercial zone, and that it did go through the MPC process, and there was a resolution that was signed on this on August 23rd, 2016. So, sir, if this has not been submitted, I submit it for the record.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And hoping our colleagues could be given the opportunity. I do know that some of the folks or the government entity worked with, maybe looking at an R2 zoning, but it was at the request of the family, and I hope they're here to ask that it be given its maximum utilization and go for commercial C.
Thank you. Signing up for the, to provide testimony is Mr. Mike Borja and Mr. Victor Dunca. So, Mike, we'll go ahead and we'll hear first from Mr. Borja from Department of Land Management.
I'm Mike Borja, the Director of the Department of Land Management. And on Bill Number 352-33, this bill proposes to rezone a property identified as Lot 2057-R2, municipality of Mongong Totomaiti, formerly the municipality of Baragada, shown on a survey map identified as land management check number 155-FY2012. And it's approximately 21,363 square meters, or about five and a quarter acres. It is currently zoned A for agricultural and is located in the former military housing of the old Naval Air Station Agania. A land zoning consideration report dated September 6th was previously submitted to this committee, and it contains a more comprehensive assessment of the zone request. I must note, though, that it does not contain all the things that would normally be provided in a normal land zone change application, to include anything from the Application Review Committee. I have also attached this report to this testimony, and in part, it states the following: "The subject property is within the former military housing complex with its existing infrastructure designed to accommodate residential use. In addition, the property is located in the deep enclave of residential uses along the Maiti Cliff Line and to its west makes use of the property more palatable and compatible for residential use. There are no proposed master plans for properties surrounding the subject lot. However, we suspect development trends for the immediate area, particularly along the Tejon Parkway Road, will respond to commercial use demands. It is important to note that the historical use of Lot 2057-R2 for residential development and how such use persisted under the guise of the federal government. Lot 2057-R2 is part of the return of federal excess land assets returned to the heirs of the original owner for final disposition. As with similar status properties, the property was returned without inclusion into the 1967 Guam Land Use Master Plan, thus left without a land zoning designation upon its return. With the enactment of Public Law 31198, said properties were given the designation of A agricultural zone. Lot 2057-R2 was used primarily for residential use to support military housing needs. The property and its surrounding lots with similar uses have proven to be viable for residential development regardless of their proximity to the landing, airport landing strip. We have determined the property is approximately a third of a mile from the new Tejon Parkway Road and approximately half a mile from the closest runway. Likewise, as the property is located off the Maiti Cliff Line, it provides a desirable opportunity to implement uses akin to residential development. Thus, the Department of Land Management has concluded that in line with present and future use of the area and the highest and best use of Lot 2057-R2 will be for residential and will support a zone change of said lot to either R1 single-family or R2 multifamily and/or a combination of such zoning designation." Thank you very much for allowing me to submit this testimony. Like I said, even though the land zoning consideration report includes many of the things that might be part of a normal application review process, it does not include things like public works assessment. I do not know, and I can't testify on behalf of the Department of Public Works or the Federal Highway folks as to what the designation and use of the Tejon Parkway is and where its entrances and ingresses and egresses are to be permitted so that they can access in and out of there. I tend to feel that the way it's being designed right now, that they're trying to limit the entrances and exits of that Parkway along its route as it transits through the airport area. And I can't speak either on whether or not the sewer lines are compatible in the area that would be necessary as well for the commercial use, nor what the airport's restrictions may be in that particular area, because we have not pulled the Application Review Committee to review this, although we did send them out letters.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borja. Mr. Dunca?
Yes, good afternoon, Senators. My name is Victor Dunca, retired Army, and also heir to one of the, to the properties here. Basically, it's going to be a simple testimony with a little deviation for your questions as well as Mr. Borja's questions as well. So, what we're seeking is just to rezone this property here to eliminate limitations for the interest in my family. With my siblings and my family's children, what we see is opportunities in the future for them to perhaps own a business or come up with a R2 zoning, so they could have multiple family dwellings. So, we can keep this property within our family tradition and create a standalone financial gain for ourselves. So, in a sense, there's so many different ideas that could come up, but what we're looking for is the future of our children within our family.
Okay. Yes. Thank you. I have a few questions. First of all, is this property that's to be rezoned, is it part of an estate, or is this, for example, your property?
This property is part of an estate. It has gone through the initial probate already.
Right.
With the two families, it's already been separated. However, we do have a common interest for a rezone and also for our interests here.
So, is there an administrator for this estate?
Currently, because, there was a previous administrator for the two areas, but because this one, on the release, there's no administrator for this piece of property. To my understanding from my lawyer, because we have a common interest, we could go forth with a, whether it be a sale or development.
So, I guess the question in my mind is if this property belongs to an estate. So, normally, the court, I guess, would appoint or an administrator is there to speak on behalf of the family as to what does or does not happen on that property, as opposed to having different heirs coming in saying, "We want this, we want to do that, or we want to do that." And so, I'm just, I have concerns that we're not really, or is there something from the administrator saying, "Yes, we want this." As the administrator, we want to rezone this property. Do you see where I'm coming from?
Of course, yes, yes, yes. I could get that to you via email or in writing. I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Well, probably be best to drop it off then. You could drop it off either with the sponsor of the bill, and she'll get it to me. But I would like to, I would like to have that documentation as part of the report that, in fact, this request for rezoning is coming from the administrator who's legally appointed to represent that estate. The second question that I have is, Mr. Borja, you indicated the surrounding lots are A-zone?
Well, that's what they usually were. I don't know if in our map, we look to see what the other surrounding lots were, but typically, all the lots in lands that are returned will get, do get zoned in the agricultural zoning category because that's what the law allows. They come with no zoning when they're returned to the government of Guam.
Yeah. So, usually, if this rezoning was going to go through the conventional process of going through the Guam Land Use Commission, there are certain things that we have, the Application Review Committee, that reviews to see what's the impact on the infrastructure and et cetera. But one of the other requirements is that the surrounding lot owners are informed that this property is going to be rezoned. And the law is very specific about, you know, even the size of the letters on the sign. And so, in view of the fact that this lot is going to be rezoned, is asking, this bill is asking to rezone the property as, to C-zone, I think it'll be prudent that some kind of information is provided to the surrounding landowners that now you're going to have a commercially-zoned property in the midst of this residentially-zoned area. There was another bill that was submitted previous to this one, and the sponsor of that bill suggested to the individual that was asking to have the property rezoned to pretty much mirror the requirement of that information board, as would be required if it was going through the land use commission. And the property owner agreed to that. I would think in this case, it would almost warrant that, you know, to get this bill reported out of committee, that maybe that extra step should be taken so that the surrounding lot owners, if they have any question about it, either that or the other, I mean, if it was going to go through a land use commission, there would be that requirement to get the name and the mailing address of each surrounding lot owner, and that notices will be sent out to them so that they don't wake up one morning and find out that, you know, the lot next door. So, I would ask that you consider that. Yes?
Sure.
Sure.
Situs mase, Senator Adda, I do want to share for the record that the family did provide documentation from Land Management, which is Number 856411, which is the Second Amended Decree Settling Final Counting of Co-Administratories and for the partial final distribution of the heirs of Francisco Meno Mesa. And it talks about the original estate from Jose Panala Mesa and the breakdown of the heirs to that, and that ordered and decreed that there were expenses for the land and for the estate, and that there was another named recipient, and that's the estate of Greta M. Duenas and Karadot M. Iglesias, but that would be on the other side. So, I also will submit this for the record because it shows the distribution to the family and what it is. And I think the next thing would be is if there's any additional-
Well, and that's fine, but when the bill was submitted, the committee hadn't seen those documents.
We just got-
But even with that, that court document, which shows, you know, who are the legal heirs and all that, if, you know, if we were rezoning the property, the lot that belongs to you, then, then fine, of course. But we are rezoning, I guess, a larger lot that belongs to several heirs, and it is not clear that there's that agreement. And I guess that clarity can be brought by the administrator.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, that technicality is very, very important in the legal exchange and changeover of zoning for the lots, because it is one of those requirements. It sounds as if the probate had been completed and the administrator's job had been completed, and therefore, each of the designated owners of the lots would have to be the individuals that make the request for the change out of the lot, if it was already broken down into that kind of category.
Sure.
And again, I'm going to be a stickler about this because I've seen other cases. There was a property in Tuman, down there by one of the hotels, and one of the heirs made a similar motion. And when it went through, I tell you, the other heirs came in and they just went at it, and says, "Cool, I don't want to be a part of that." Okay. Okay. Thank you. Now, is there any particular intended, I know you kind of mentioned something about, is there a, we want to zone it, now, you mentioned something in your testimony that you want to rezone it so that maybe to put in, what was that, an R2-type facility or?
At least R2, what we're looking at as a commercial, if it may be. This is, again, it's for the future of our children and our children's children.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't know if you guys sorted it out? Yeah. I just want to note for the record that-
Sure.
-when family members came to our office, that as a group, it was said that the family wanted to come together, maximize it to a commercial zoning so that the value of the property could have the highest and best utilized, so that when they sold the property, that they would get more bang for their buck.
Well, we're looking at maximum potential. I mean, we could put a number on it.
No, but are you guys going to sell it as a family, or are you guys going to work? Because that's-
It could go different ways. I mean, is there a buyer? Who knows? If they come with the right price, maybe perhaps-
Because it was brought to our attention that the family wanted, that you guys had a possible buyer, and that's why you wanted to maximize the sale. I just, I wanted to know if that was a correct statement or not? Because that's a part of my notes.
Okay. It is, it could be accurate. It is accurate. I could also say, can I buy everyone's share out to a certain number, and then perhaps maybe take that property for my immediate family?
Okay.
And if I might just add, once a property is zoned, let's say, to commercial, it comes with all the privileges that a commercial zone can allow, and it could include many things that maybe some of the residents in the area do not want to have, bars and the like. Along the cliff line right now is predominantly residential, minus one area, which is, I believe, a church along the cliff line. And then, the majority of the cliff line area from Agania down towards Home Depot area is all going- is all, is pretty much military housing. As the Tejon Parkway continues its changeover, it will drop off of the cliff line near the, where the warehousing section of the airport is at, and drop down into, off the cliff and down into Home Depot from there. So the ability to do anything else along that cliff line will probably end where that highway drops down.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much for taking the time to come in, and thank you very much, Mr. Borja. So we'll consider the public hearing on Bill 352 as having been duly heard. And being that there's no further testimony or questions, we'll consider then this public hearing as being complete, and we will now adjourn. It is 1:53 PM. Okay.